Good evening. It is six P M. And I call this regularly scheduled May twenty seventh, twenty twenty five Dunwoody City Council meeting to order unless I see an objection. Seeing none, this meeting is called to order. Councilman Henigan, can you lead us in the invocation and the pledge?
Please rise if you are able. At this meeting, help us to make decisions which keep us faithful to our mission and reflect our values. Give us strength to hold to our purpose, wisdom to guide us, and a keen perception to lead us. And above all, keep us charitable as we deliberate. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Officer Hernandez and Chief Carlson or and or Chief Carlson, I see you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members. Tonight, we're going to recognize, excuse me, our Citizens Police Academy Class Number sixteen. This time, I'm going to turn it over to Officer Hernandez, who does the coordination for this class.
Good evening, Council. How are you this evening? So this, we did just complete our sixteenth class of the Citizens Police Academy. We had about ten people that were able to complete it, including your own Rob Price. So it was a great class. As always, we did the simulator, traffic stops, a lot of different, there's actually we've added fourteen classes altogether now. So we have fourteen different nights that they are there. It started with, I don't know, the beginning would have started probably nine. I know another city nearby only does eight nights, so we do fourteen. So we have a lot of information that our students do learn, and they're all seem pretty happy with everything. I do have another class starting again in August twelfth. So if anyone here in council hasn't completed, would love to have you in August. And I do have someone that would like to come up here and speak on how they felt about the class. Roger?
Thank you. Excuse me. Thank you, Teresa and Chief Carlson, for facilitating and supporting this very interesting and worthwhile program. The classes were well organized. We always started on time. The instructors were well prepared. Content was excellent. Classes were very interactive. All of us participated. Exercises were interesting and real day-to-day experiences of our Dunwoody Police Force. This was a day in the life of the dedicated Dunwoody Police Force, even though all classes were in the evenings. Content was a highlight. SWAT, gangs, crime investigation, accident investigation, simulations, plus many more. So I thank you for the opportunity and hope that the Dunwoody Police Academy continues. And I didn't know the next class is August twelfth, so I encourage everyone to participate. Thank you.
And in closing, for the Citizens Police Academy, I would just really like to commend Officer Hernandez and the level that she has risen, this Citizens Police Academy. I always get the greatest feedback, and sir, I'm glad you were able to attend to see what we do on a day-to-day basis, so.
You're again, Chief Wright.
Yes, ma'am. At this time, I would like to call up our latest additions to the Dunwoody Police Department. I'd like to call up Officers Laquisha Marshall, Alex Smith, and Catherine Thielman. All right, first I would like to, it'll be from your right to left, is Laquisha Marshall. Officer Marshall joined us from the City of Atlanta Police Department, where she worked as a police officer since two thousand twenty. Her previous work history includes positions in security and customer service. Laquisha holds a bachelor's degree in criminal justice from Georgia State University, and she joined our team on May sixth of this year. To the next left is Officer Alex Smith. Alex joined us from the Columbia County Sheriff's Office, where she worked as a deputy sheriff since January. Prior to this, she was employed as a police officer for the Athens-Clark County Police Department. Her previous work history includes positions in customer service, administration, and hospitality. Alex holds an associate's degree in criminal justice from Georgia Military College, and she is currently enlisted in the Army National Guard. She joined our team on May seventh, twenty twenty-five. I was actually a part of her. She's a part of, she's an engineer, so we actually, at different times, we served in the same battalion. So it just shows you what kind of small world it is. And last is Catherine Thielman. Catherine joined us from Athens-Clark County Police Department, where she worked as a police officer since two thousand twenty-one. Prior to this, she was employed as a crime scene intern for Walton County Sheriff's Office. Her previous work history includes positions in customer service and sales. Catherine holds a bachelor's degree in criminal justice from the University of Georgia and a master's degree in forensic psychology from Arizona State University. She joined our team also on May seventh, twenty twenty-five.
Hi, welcome to Dunwoody. It's my great honor to administer the oath of office to y'all. Please don't squeak. If you could raise your right hand, please. And then just repeat after me. On my honor, I say your names, please. Do solemnly swear and affirm that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the State of Georgia. And the Charter and ordinances of the City of Dunwoody, Georgia. I am not the holder of any unaccounted-for public money due to this state or any public subdivision or authority thereof. I am not the holder of any office of trust under the government of the United States. Any other state or any foreign state which I am by the laws of the State of Georgia prohibited from holding. I am otherwise qualified to hold the office of a peace officer according to the Constitution. And laws of the State of Georgia. I will faithfully follow the legal rules, regulations, policies, and procedures of the Dunwoody Police Department in the City of Dunwoody, Georgia. Congratulations. So first, if everyone could join me in welcoming our three newest police officers to Dunwoody. Look, we know you had choices. And also, I might be in trouble, Mayor Gertz, right, in Athens? But we know you had choices, and we're incredibly grateful that you have chosen to make Dunwoody your professional home. We are a wonderful community, and I believe the best police department in the state. I know the best police department in the state, and we are thrilled you are here. Don't hesitate to ask any of us if you need something. We are here to support you and your colleagues. And speaking of your colleagues, as always, we are tremendously grateful for the work that the Dunwoody Police Department does to keep our community safe, to support our community at events. Lemonade Days was a huge effort, and we appreciate that. And we are incredibly grateful for the work that y'all do on a daily basis. So once again, welcome. We're very proud you're here, and thank you again for choosing Dunwoody. And round of applause again. And congratulations. Congratulations. Chief, again.
I've asked IT to get a little bit of feedback. They're working on it, Mayor. Yeah. Okay, this time, I'd like to do a recognition of educational achievements. I'd like to ask Sergeant Cheek, Sergeant Seela, and Officer Edwards to please approach. All right. So I'm going to first start with Sergeant Seela. He, we had recommended to him, you know, to start working on your education. This was before he became a sergeant and all that. So sure enough, he did, and he got his associate's degree. And he just finished up his bachelor's degree in criminal justice from Liberty University, and I believe you're going to start looking at semesters. Okay. But anyway, I would like to commend him for focusing on his personal self-development. He's a familiar face. You know who Sergeant Seela is. He's done a fantastic job on Born and Watch, so I'd like to give a round of applause for him. In the middle, Officer Jacory Edwards. He was actually our Officer of the Year for twenty twenty-four. He does an outstanding job. He's about to finish his Reconstruction Five, which is, so he is one of our accident investigators on any type of serious injury or fatality. So he's on call all the time, and he's done a phenomenal job since he's been here. But he just recently received his Master of Criminal Justice and Public Safety Leadership. And he's going a little bit further than that. He's also working on his PhD. So I don't know if he's going to make me call him Dr. Edwards when, when, when he completes that. But anyway, I'd like to give him a round of applause for his continuing self-development. And of course, last but not least, I've got two, two recognitions here for Sergeant Cheek. And as you know, he's, he's our PIO, Community Outreach Sergeant, and wears a million hats. Every day, he does an outstanding job with our hiring process. He is the, between him and Lieutenant Finesse, they do an outstanding job of making sure we have the highest quality officers coming through the department to represent the city. So Sergeant Cheek, he also just finished his master's degree from Columbus State University, and that was in December. And it's a Master of Public Safety Administration. So I'd like to do a first round of applause for that achievement. And for all of, all that you know, we are a state-accredited agency, and basically that sets the standard to make sure that our policies and procedures are in place and that everything is up to date, and that keeps us, it holds us accountable to following those state standards. Sergeant Cheek is the backbone of the state accreditation. And we're, we're kind of overdue because we already received our third in a row state accreditation for the department, and Sergeant Cheek is a huge, the biggest part of that. Now granted, the department as a whole, we have to provide him information to make sure that we are within the standards and policies and procedures for the state accreditation, but he does a great job. We actually are supposed to receive an award, and it's called Silver Award for Ten Years Straight of Certification. So as always, we always make sure that we hold ourselves accountable to the highest standards here in the state of Georgia, and Sergeant Cheek is a big part of that. So I'd like to congratulate him on that. And gentlemen, keep up the great work. Thank you for the lunch.
Chief, after you shake their hands, please. Congratulations. Yeah, y'all. Chief, can you talk about the city benefit for education, please, in case people don't know what our role is?
Correct. We do offer tuition assistance, which all three of them have used. And of course, once you obtain your degree, you get a bump in pay as well. So I wholeheartedly appreciate Mayor, Council, City Manager for letting us have that added benefit, because that is an incentive for, for these individuals here to stand in front of you that are able to obtain that higher education.
Thank you. Thank you all, and congratulations. Oh, she wants us. All right, Chief.
Okay, my last topic for the evening, but a very exciting topic for recognition of our employees. At this time, I'd like to call up Officer Eric Drum and Police Service Representative Kim Stone. All right, I'll go ahead and start with Kim Stone. PSR Stone consistently goes above and beyond in her role as a PSR. She displays exceptional, exceptional dedication and a very strong work ethic. PSR Stone is always willing to help others and share her knowledge. If there is something that she doesn't know, she will work tirelessly to help find the appropriate answers. PSR Stone is very patient while mentoring, training, explaining the various aspects of the job, and does so without judgment. PSR Stone, excuse me, PSR Stone has collaborated on several projects recently to help eliminate a backlog of paperwork at the front desk and provides great customer service when communicating with the public by handling their needs professionally and effectively. PSR Stone is a team player who consistently steps up and is always willing to lend a hand and fill in for other, excuse me, for others when needed, even when it falls outside our regular schedule. So this quarter's, civilian of the quarter is PSR Kim Stone. Okay. And our officer of the quarter is Officer Eric Drum, the K-9 handler of Hank. Officer Drum consistently puts others before himself by rearranging his regular work schedule and personal time off to assist patrol teams when staffing is short. Officer Drum regularly attends monthly Governor's Office of Highway Safety and Metro Atlanta Traffic Enforcement Network meetings. Furthermore, Officer Drum played a pivotal role in organizing and helping to facilitate the January twenty twenty-five GOHS Matton Meeting that was hosted by the Dunwoody Police Department. The January twenty twenty-five GOHS Matton Meeting could not have been as successful as it was without Officer Drum's direct assistance. Officer Drum also received guardian appreciation for helping locate and arrest a burglary, burglary suspect participating in a CID, a crime suppression detail that resulted in several K-9 deployments, and has increased productivity and dedication in addressing step, that's our traffic unit-related enforcement complaints. This quarter, this quarter, officer of the quarter is Officer Eric Drum. I know I had a lot on the agenda, but I appreciate your time and attention in showing the, what the officers do each and every day, not only just out on the streets, but what they do personally to professionally develop themselves. So thank you.
No, thank you, Chief. We could not be more appreciative of the work you and your entire team does for the City of Dunwoody. There's not really enough words, so I'll stop, but thank you very much. We appreciate it. All right. Next is public comments. Zach Humphries, the, give us one second while everyone leaves, and then I'll call you up as soon as we'll let people leave. You don't have to write. You don't have to leave, but if you're leaving now would be an okay time. But you can leave whenever you want. You don't have to leave. People could stay. Right? Okay. One more second. It's good. All right, Zach, now you can approach the podium, and you'll have three minutes.
Hi, thank you, everybody. So I sent to council today an analysis of all of the available options to fix our budgetary problems. According to the twenty twenty-five approved budget, if nothing is done, Dunwoody will become insolvent in four years. I know that I've talked a lot about the frozen asset clause, but in my opinion, this is the only way. I've looked through all of the property tax returns from, I know I put twenty twenty-three, but it's actually twenty twenty-two. We, if we voted to get rid of the frozen asset clause, we would have a surplus in our budget. We could really use that for a lot of really wonderful things. We could afford to give our police officers salary raises. We could afford to bring in a lot of our contract government employees into our office, make sure that they have proper healthcare. And also, you know, I'd really like for us to start looking into our nonprofit employees. I'm absolutely in favor of us supporting the, at the Donald Bannister Farm, the renovations to the blacksmithing house. You know, they really do a fantastic job over at the Dunwoody Preservation Trust. You know, I would really love to, you know, get in collaboration with our nonprofit groups and think about incorporating them into the Dunwoody Government, just so that we can make sure that all of the employees there have proper health insurance and proper wages. But genuinely, the only way to fix our budgetary problems is if we got rid of the frozen asset clause, a special purpose tax district, and imposing it without a public vote, in my opinion, goes against the charter because it works the exact same way as raising the, the, the mileage rate cap after the money is shuffled around. I do not think that it will stand up to legal scrutiny. And by the point that there is an injunction, I, I think that there would likely be an injunction put on it. And by the time that there is a legal determination on the special purpose tax district, you know, it could be four years, or it could be two years. It could be, it, it, you know, by that point, we could be insolvent. I really please ask the council to create a citizens committee. We have four years. To create a citizens committee that will allow us for a transition out of the frozen asset clause that includes anybody who could be affected, especially fixed income elderly. I really beg of you all to consider these options, and I will be running for city council this November for the first district post one to help make sure that all of our citizens are taken care of and the City of Dunwoody uses us in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Ali?
Good evening, City Council. Thank you for having me. So we're doing a lot of things very right in Dunwoody, and one of the things we're doing really, really right is the restaurant kind of scene and district. I think we have Hampton Social opening up. We've got even Raising Cane's entertaining the city, which is just delightful and exciting, a Wagyu Steakhouse, so many different places to come in Dunwoody. We've done a very good job of attracting these businesses, and what I'd like to ask City Council to consider is maybe having a subcommittee to maybe see what we could do to support them. So again, I'd be very curious about how many actual individual restaurants we have within like a one or two-mile radius, but I imagine it's very large. We've got all the different cuisines that one could want. But if there's something we could do on a city or kind of a global level for the city to kind of support these restaurants, I know Roswell has like Roswell Restaurant Week and different things. It would be nice if we could set something up where we could just give them some support. I actually, as a citizen, wouldn't mind even where we could just give them some support. I actually, as a citizen, wouldn't mind even some public money going towards global advertisement of all the restaurants. Um, we don't want to keep it too much of a secret, but especially at the neighboring cities like Chambly, Dorville, uh even Sandy Springs. I imagine there's going to be a large group of people who might even on a Friday night not want to go to Buckhead, not want to pay the expensive bu- uh parking and would want the protections of the Dunwoody Police Department and feel safer to go out maybe in um Dunwoody. So my ultimate request is that we may be considered putting in some type of subcommittee. I think right now all of this would fall under the Discover Dunwoody, if I'm not mistaken. Um, some type of sub planning committee there, but if we can maybe consider now that we've just exploded on the restaurant scene of figuring out a way to kind of continuously support these restaurants, that'd be awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. Joe Hirsch. Approach the microphone and you'll have three minutes.
Hey there. So I'm guessing probably about twelve years ago, uh the city had some technical problems and was unable to record or save or produce um online the city uh council meeting. And so I requested it from the city because I'd like to have a copy of it since it wasn't available online. And the city told me they were going to charge me three dollars to have a copy of a public meeting of a public record. John Henigan was appalled by that, so he offered to pay the three dollar fee for me. Noting that the city should provide records and information to the public. I wonder now if any of you would pay that three dollars now. Because everything you do right now, the whole city has spent, I'm guessing about eighty thousand dollars so far. It's going to be hundreds of thousands of dollars when you add it all up, fighting transparency, finding public records, fighting what's right. I filed a uh, a motion with the court to require the city of Dunwoody to adopt a uh provision for the security and maintenance of records, which is required by the state of Georgia. Y'all claim that you have it in the charter, but the city has admitted that it doesn't exist. You don't have this provision to, to maintain records. So what is the city doing when I asked or the court to uh demand that y'all do it? The city of Dunwoody is spending taxpayer money to fight a ruling from the court that would require you to abide by the state constitution. Yeah, you are spending money fighting what you already claimed to be doing. It's baffling. Why would you do that? Why do you fight transparency so hard? I think it's, some of y'all sit there quietly uh under the cover of, well, our legal counsel or our city manager told us this or that. So you sit there quietly and you don't say a word and you become complicit. You don't act. You act like you don't have a brain and that's disingenuous and rude to the citizens of Dunwoody. I've tried for fifteen years to get Sharon to get her office in, in order and no one would listen. I've begged our city manager to speak to me. He wouldn't because he's one of the biggest violators of the Open Records Act, as you'll see in my lawsuit if you've read it. But it's just mind boggling that the city keeps fighting transparency, even, you know, the law firm that you hired said that no text messages are ever, ever to be preserved. Do you believe that? Is that what you learned in your records class? If not, you should speak up. How about you, Mr. Secondary, who stood up in his crisp uniform yesterday? He said, when you see something wrong, you should speak up. You're silent. You're disingenuous to your uniform, to the everyone. And it's appalling. I have much more to say at the end of the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is a consent agenda. Does anybody have any questions or comments?
Move to approve. Second.
Move by Councilman Henigan, second by Councilman Price. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I call the question. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed hearing? None. That passes unanimously of those that are here. Your next. And Jessica, do you need to read this one? I think you might.
Item number seven is funding authorization for Sunbelt Traffic to replace a signal pole on the southeast corner of perimeter center Parkway and Hammond Drive. Michael Smith.
The evening, Sunbelt is our own call traffic signal maintenance contractor, every unit price contract with the city. And the request tonight is to authorize funding for ninety thousand nine hundred fifty dollars plus a ten percent contingency for them to replace the traffic signal pole at the corner of perimeter center Parkway and Hammond Drive. This, this is a budgeted item in this year's budget and we had already planned to replace it and then about a month or so ago uh or about six weeks ago, it got hit by a truck and to the point where we've had to put in a temporary signal until we can get the replacement signal in. So we're, we're requesting approval. We'll go ahead and move forward with this.
Uh, questions or comments? Uh, Rob, go ahead.
My, my question is just related to the claim. Assuming that that's paid, would it reimburse the full cost? Is that a partial cost? Do we have any idea where it might fall?
We, we don't know at this point. I mean, we're going to ask them for everything. But we don't, you know, that, the insurance companies will fight that out probably.
Well, no matter what, I think we need to.
Catherine, right. I had a question about the insurance too. So you're just going to have to wait and see what they will.
Yes, we, we've notified the other insurance and our uh risk managers working, working on that angle of it, but um. So we'll keep tallies of everything we spend and then seek reimbursement for all of it.
Yeah, PCIDs. The PCID's pole skirt that you have to put on to the pole to make it uniform with all of the other ones, is that not something they pay for?
They typically have in the past. We will ask them. Usually what they do is they will pay us for the difference in cost between their style and what we would normally put up, so.
And then you have the police uh, the, their line item to direct the traffic. Can you not use citizens on patrol for that?
Uh, that'd be a question for the chief.
You're saying that.
I don't think so. I don't think we.
The ambassadors. Well, I don't think that's their job.
Citizen Patrol.
The answer to your question, yes, we can use the ambassadors to uh.
Not citizens. Citizens on patrol in Dunwoody are not ch- trained to direct traffic, correct?
They're not trained to traffic.
Ambassadors. So this is the big item, but I mean, this is everything on the budget, just in case you need it. Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. I have a question. Is there something we should be doing differently so trucks don't hit it?
Well, we're, we're going to move it. If it, we're moving it further from the curb. And we had already planned to do that and then um, we're, we're getting it as far away as we can now.
Okay, I mean, not the trucks should hit it, but just, it feels like. Go ahead, Stacy.
So, and I know there's some unknowns with utilities and like the report said that you guys have looked at it, like and there's in the contract, Sunbelt will, you know, I, talk to me about like, what do we think the unknowns are and?
Well, we already uh, we already did a, like a test hole to make sure that we could put the pole where we want to put it because we didn't want, you know, once you order the pole, it's the length and everything's kind of set. So we have confirmed that part. But um, I, I don't think we'll need a lot of that contingency, but it's just we typically carry it. And in this case, the unknown would probably be something with utilities if there was anything.
So Michael, this is unpredictable, but it's, there's always budget. So it's splosted, but it's where, how are we, if we, we know that we always have contingencies that happen that we need to have monies for. So annually, we set aside a certain slice of the splosh just to set aside for these kind of events.
It, well, it's just usually built into the project budget. So in this case, we we, the budget has a hundred and six thousand nine hundred ninety dollars and so the quote is ninety thousand. You know, even with the contingency, we should be under that, the amount that's set aside in the budget. So, so the total cost of the project will be under the budget amount.
Well, what I kind of was meaning though, in our splosts, we have a separate set aside for these type of needs, capital. Is that how this was allocated from our?
No, I mean, this was uh, we made this a request in the budget last year. We, so we already and just, we already wanted to replace this pole because it had been hit before. Uh, and so it, it had, it was in the budget and then it got hit again and so it was fortuitous that we had it in the budget.
Thank you. Understood.
Yeah. All right. This is an action item.
Move to approve.
Move by Stacy, uh, move, uh, seconded by Joe. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I call the question. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none. It carries. Thank you. All right, Rachel, you, uh, great job on Memorial Day. It was a wonderful ceremony. Thank you very much for your efforts in organizing that.
All right. Good evening. Um, so tonight we're here to um discuss the renovations at the Dawson Bannister Farm, um what we call the Blacksmith Shop. Um, so just to give you a little bit of background, obviously, um DBT doing wonderful things. Um, they've had great program success. Um, and currently they're, they're using every inch of available space for their, their outstanding programming. Um, what is, what has been called the Blacksmith Shop is currently used primarily for storage. Um, so they started looking into maybe utilizing that um to expand their programming. They are because, because of the history of the, of the property, um, everything they've looked at would comply with the Secretary of the Interior Standards for Rehabilitation. Uh, this is just a little picture. This is our three hundred sixty-five square foot Blacksmith Shop. Um, probably a hundred years old, wood frame, concrete floors, you can see here. Um, they have found remnants of the historic Stone Foundation. Um, and through this, it would be able to, you know, add to their history exhibits about Dunwoody. Um, given the, the year um that we think this was built, um, they did hire J Lloyd Engineering um to perform a structural assessment just to make sure everything that was planned um could happen. Um, and then his assessment in turn was used um in soliciting quotes uh for the work needing to be done. Um, so total cost for this project um would be about fifty-three thousand dollars and fifty-three thousand ninety-four dollars. Um, Dunwoody Preservation Trust is contributing thirty-four thousand six hundred of that and then um Parks is covering the remain eighteen-five. Um, and just some quick math um from programming, if, if they're able to renovate, um, this would extend camp flashback, um, twenty twenty-five summer camp rate of three eighty per child, um, which would equillate to about another almost twenty-three thousand dollars in revenue over the course of one summer. So um, they're really invested in renovating this. Um, should be a quick uh return on investment for, for them and their, and their programming. Um, so tonight we're just um here to request the reward, award a contract to Licky Commercial Construction. Um, the amount of fifty-three thousand ninety-four dollars, um authorized staff to provide partial funding for the project. Um, and then force execute documents necessary. Um, I'm here. We have a few representatives from Dunwoody Preservation Trust. If y'all have any questions, um, that'll open it up.
Uh, questions? I do. Yeah. Where is our, where is the Parks Department getting the funding to contribute our part?
Uh, it would be what I consider Parks General Capital, basically, my little mistake.
And you have, you have the funds?
Yes, ma'am.
So when this comes back to us, will you just put that information in the memo, please? Okay, can this be consent? Consent? Yes, okay, consent. Thank you very much. It's an exciting project. Um, good luck on the construction. All right, public comments. I don't have any cards, but I think Councilman, I mean, um. Okay, so you'll have three minutes um when Jessica is ready. Okay.
Transparency fosters democracy. Transparency fosters democracy. So yesterday, I'm going to single out Councilman's uh Secondary again because he was so vocal about his pride in abiding by the oath of Georgia and his oath of office. He stated, quote, this is interesting. As an officer and a leader in the army, I was taught this. If you see a behavior that is incorrect and you fail to address it, you've just set a new standard. That lesson has stayed with me. All right? Our city clerk, Eric uh Shealy, he has admitted to a misdemeanor that he throws away documents that belong to the public. Yeah. He should be prosecuted. He's committed a crime. Now that you know about it, are you just going to sit there quietly? Does your oath mean anything to you? Are you really as proud as you say you are? Would you pay the three dollars to take care of issues? This council just sits there and twiddles its thumbs as if, oh, well, it's not our problem because we're relying on the advice of council of our, of our city attorney or Freeman Mathis and Gary. Freeman Mathis and Gary is sucking the teat of all the taxpayers of our, y'all are a cash cow. Why would they tell you that you're wrong? Think about it. They've made tens and tens of thousands of dollars off of you, the suckers of Dunwoody, because you sit silent. Councilman Secondary says you're supposed to speak up when you see a wrong, but not one of you have. And I, I brought up all these issues with you before I even filed a lawsuit. But once I filed, there were so many more issues that kept coming and coming and coming up that the city has failed to do. I keep adding to my lawsuit. For instance, Eric Shealy, our esteemed city clerk, says he throws away things because he doesn't consult the records retention schedule in violation of Georgia law. Does that concern you? He says it's not his job description to learn from his mistakes. That's what he said under oath. I think y'all have the same persona. Well, we were told that we're fine, so we're not going to do anything. Remember, you're insulting all of us by pretending you don't have a brain. None of you are that stupid, are you? I've just acknowledged countless violations of the city is, is committed and not one of you has shown the courage or the strength or the dignity to admit to the taxpayers that you're at fault because of your egos and you're wanting to protect someone that doesn't deserve it. Shame on all of you. Do better.
Thank you. Uh, city manager comments.
Uh, Mayor and Council, I'd like to take city manager comments today to highlight something that's going to help in for the next few weeks. Um, this is, and if Lorenzo, if you can pull it up now. This is the time of year where the tax assessment notices go out and we start to have public hearings and the most complicated rule in Georgia history comes up and that's how to advertise mileage rates. So I'd like to do kind of a little debrief on it because those advertisements will start popping up in the papers in the next few weeks. Um, you know, the next slide. Okay, despite numerous changes to the laws over the past two years, advertising mileage rates for cities who have a hard freeze, Dunwoody has a hard freeze. Um, it's still confusing and it actually lacks true transparency for those cities. There is no homesteaded property in this city that would see a property tax increase unless it changed hands, sold from one person to another. But state law, no matter what, will require us to advertise a tax increase. The city even has a more restrictive than what was passed statewide. The statewide allows for inflation. The Dunwoody one does not have inflation built into it. Go to the next slide. To kind of get to the numbers, you know, the tax rate for this next upcoming year that the budget's built on is the cap of three point oh four. Last year's mileage rate was three point oh four. Therefore, the difference is zero point zero zero. We double checked that a few times math wise and came up with the same answer. Uh, so there's no additional proper revenue from homesteaded properties. Now, to be fully clear on it, commercial properties, when they are reassessed, there will be additional revenue and for homes, uh, houses that change hands, the increase in value will go there. Also, as a note, we aren't allowed really to advertise that our rate is two point oh four. It's three point oh four. The one mil exemption doesn't come into play in our advertisements. So we have officially, because of state law, they say our rate should be two point nine six four and that decrease is based upon what we just said with the calculated reassessments from commercial properties and properties that change hands. Go ahead. Your typical Dunwoody home, and again, these are all kind of loose right now, but if it's assessed at six hundred thousand and frozen at four hundred thousand, pays about three hundred dollars a year, two ninety-six, less than a dollar a day to the city. But if a homeowner adds up its school bill, its county bills, and also the amount covered by the county e-host, in other words, the general tax and Grady tax, there's about seventy-two hundred dollars of other taxes. there's about seventy-two hundred dollars of other taxes that are not going to the city. So it's a very small portion of your tax bill. Finally, next slide. Okay, right now, these are alternative, but we've, we think we have enough for the three meetings. We do still have to have three meetings for this. Uh, they will be tentatively, and again, these could change in the morning, but we think we're locked down to them. Monday, June sixteenth at eight AM, Monday, June sixteenth at six PM, and June thirtieth at six PM, and two of those would be special call meetings. The middle one is an already established meeting by the council. We're a little bit locked into the advertising schedule, uh, GMA conference, and also when we need to get it to the county. So we're kind of stuck with this. We're gonna see if we can work on it in the morning, but I think these will be the three dates for this upcoming year. And with that, I'll take any questions on this.
Uh, John?
Jay, has the county released the millage rate or the assessments or the valuation of the county? Has that gone up, down? Is that coming to play at all?
It, it has gone up, and I'll have to, without pulling it up, it, we hit around five point eight, five point nine percent growth this year.
Okay.
I'm gonna all digest.
Right.
Um, now, again, we will lose a little bit on reassessment, so you always knock off usually about a half a point from that, but somewhere in the mid-fives should be the final growth for this year.
So that growth, is that only the city of Dunwoody or is that DeKalb County as a whole?
That number is city of Dunwoody only.
All right, so the values of our commercial and everybody's a whole five percent. Wow, that, that's a good number. We weren't actually, we were not expecting that.
But you, but you should talk about how that that brings in.
It, it's, it's around seven hundred thousand dollars of additional revenue, even though it's really good growth, one-third of our, our revenue sources from that. Um, again, we also have a lot of that that's that's just, we're, we're capped at the three oh four, but.
Thank you.
Can you go back a couple of slides, Jay, that showed you the calc, the different of percentage? Can you go back a further, where the mil, this one? Can, now, what's gonna be advertised in the paper?
Okay, the, the paper advertisement is going to say, um, I should have, have a different note set that's not showing up right here, but about, it's gonna say that we are increasing taxes three point six percent. That's the number, that's, if you wanna know how the math is done, three point oh four instead of two point nine six four are the two numbers. It is the most confusing state law, and I was with the state when they wrote it, so I can take part of the credits.
And can you tell me a little bit more about that last bullet point again and speak really slowly for me cuz I'm like, you know, I just, please?
Okay. The state takes our millage rate from this year, three point oh four. And it says all the values from reassessments, regardless of whose property they are, commercial or non-homesteaded or homesteaded. That increase, you should reduce your three point oh four down to this number. So when you do the calculation, you should have a city rate of two point nine six four. Its goal is to make it one hundred percent revenue neutral. Basically, it's, it's almost anti-public safety, as I've always called it, is because it says if you have the perfect city and you need inflation to keep up with police salaries or public safety, or even public works, you're not allowed inflationary increases.
All right. Um, thank you very much.
And I do.
But I think it's, so I think everyone needs to understand that the language we use in that ad is dictated by state law. We can't add any other words. We can't, we can't change it to explain it. Um, and.
And we're even to the point of, we will send out a separate press release, which is our own, which will describe what actually happens as opposed to what we have to say happens.
Right. Gotcha. Okay. Thank you. Uh, yes, um, well, uh, for council comments? Uh, Jay, was that, oh, go ahead.
I do not think we're gonna have to have executive session.
We do have executive session. I'll get to that, that. Go ahead.
Uh, it's raining tonight. Three weeks ago, I planted some beautiful shrubbery and updated my landscaping in my yard after fifteen years. I finally got around to it with some help. Rain is beautiful. Rain stopped and slowed the paving in my neighborhood, but that's, that's, you know what, it's, that is what it is. I'll take the good and the bad. The other thing that the rain has done has shown us where the potholes are. Have you driven around and looked for the brown mud coming out of the streets? I've noticed it a bunch of places, and I just wanna make sure that the city is taking a look at it that, from that perspective. Jay, next week or in our next meeting, if we could have an update on potholes and the policies, procedures, how much money we have going toward it, are we, like, tomorrow, when the rain stops, you can see where the mud is coming out of the asphalt? If anybody were driving around tomorrow noticing those, uh, every time I drive past one, I see it. I mean, I should almost have a a, a C-click fix on my car, where I just say, pothole, pothole, something's happening in the street. Anyway, I just, I'd love for us to take a look at the pothole aspect of, uh, the city. We've put a lot of money into paving and other stuff. I just wanted to jump in front of problems of, uh, and they just keep showing up with me with these rains, so thank you.
I've already alerted Michael for it.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Um, Thursday's the last day of school for DeKalb County, so wishing everybody a strong end to the end of the school year. Congratulations to our Dunwoody High School graduates. And, uh, everybody just be warned that there's going to be kids, you know,
everywhere.
Kids everywhere. Um, it should have been a swim meet night tonight, but I know most of them got postponed, so just be aware that summer's coming.
Um, anybody else? Okay, I need a motion for executive session for legal and, uh, personnel. Personnel, thank you.
Move to adjourn to executive session for, uh, purposes of, uh, legal and, um, personnel.
Second.
Um, all right. We will be back to adjourn.
And there's that one, sorry.
We have a forum, are you ready Jessica? I need a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn, second.
Councillor Women, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
You can carry them and need to adjourn.